Well, I would like to call to order and welcome all of you to the May 22nd Council meeting. My clock's shown, it's 7:35. Mr. R.C.C., would you please call the row?
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hannigan?
Here.
Mr. Muller?
Here.
Ms. Telly?
Here.
Thank you very much. We're gonna break out of the normal mode this evening because we have Memorial Day coming up next week. And in our audience, there's at least three veterans that I know of, Fred, Dan, and Mike. Would you please lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance? You can just stand at your seat. Just stand. Come on. You're a veteran and we're proud of you. All right? Whenever you're ready, Fred.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask Rita to do tonight's invitation.
God, we want to thank you for another day, another chance to do your will. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and unite in purpose. We ask that you guide us this evening for your wisdom to know what is best for us. May we honor you. Amen.
All right, we have some minutes tonight. Do I have any additions, corrections, or do I have a motion to accept?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Moving on, we have a financial report. Do I have a motion to accept?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the receipt of the financial report dated April 30, 2014.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question first, and it's regarding, we're at 89 percent or 90 percent, and all the workmen's comped. We only pay that once a year, and we're now covered for the whole year?
Yes.
Okay, and there are numerous other accounts that are over budget already that we need to make sure we... Some will be cared for tonight, but there were over 15 of them. We need to make sure that those are accounted for at our finance meeting, please.
Yes.
All right, with that discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? All right, so we accept the report. Now, we're coming to the part of the meeting where as a public, you get a chance to get up and speak. Comments by the public. We ask that you please come to this microphone at the front here, right by Joe, and tell us your name and where you live. In order to speak, we ask you to sign in, and we have some people signed in. And I ask you, please, to limit your discussion to five minutes. So Fred Quigley, you're first tonight.
Good evening, council. I'm still very disappointed in the city of Macedonia. There seems to be a total lack of concern, interest, or compassion for the residents of the city. It seems to me that the present administration is more interested in the developer, Mr. McGlorine, the contractor, Chris Coblenz, and their self-interest than their own well-being, rather than the residents of the city. A great community is one that works together as unified force along with government that works for the community. I am seeing too much of the divisiveness that separates the community from the government. I always thought that the government is elected by the people to do the work of the people. And all I see is land squabbles, building issues, and yes, even a debate over the manor house and a historical spot in the community. You allow a street to be named after McGlorine, but you don't want to restore the manor house of the first mayor of this community. He has given to the residents his service to country, his life, and his property. McGlorine, on the other hand, has profited and leaves nothing but heartache for the community and some of its residents. I total... just a total disgrace to the developer, the builder, and the community. Technically, this administration should be ashamed of all the lack of compassion and goodwill toward its residents and all to further McGlorine's ambition and the administration's own personal agenda. Case in point, Al Bell, with his elderly wife in poor health and a severely handicapped granddaughter who lives with him, can't communicate, can barely see, and is totally confined to a bed and wheelchair. The house was configured to meet some of her personal needs, all at the expense of Al. Then he discovered a problem with the construction of his home: insulation problems, return air decks missing, icicles from the gutter to the ground in front of his house in the wintertime, and other minor problems. All of these problems could easily have been fixed in a timely fashion if the contractor, Chris Coblenz, could have done the right thing, that is, fix the problems to the homeowner's satisfaction, that is, Coblenz Homes' promise in their contract. And Mr. McGlorine, the developer, stands behind that promise with his rules and regulations. The lack of action reflects negatively on the city of Macedonia. I keep thinking that I have a problem with the city, Coblenz Homes, and Macedonia Property Management. My neighbor had it worse: sanitary sewer drains going uphill, causing backflow into the pipes of waste material and leaving a smell in his garage. On top of that, he has taken care of that 37-year-old granddaughter who is severely handicapped. So far, he is getting no help from the contractor, Chris Coblenz, the developer, Joe McGlorine, and the city, who obviously are playing the waiting game, just like they're doing with me, hoping we will disappear before they have to do anything. This is a shameful and barbaric attitude. I don't know how they live with themselves. To the delivery drag-out, hoping they will survive Al, well, Al and the family, well, they have moved out, but have left an empty house needing major repairs that can't be sold until Coblenz and McGlorine get the house in order for sale. I keep hearing that it is the hands of the attorneys. From my experience, that can be forever. If the attorneys have any sense of pride or compassion, they would see to it that the issue gets resolved. I personally hold the city responsible for the inaction. The building department, the mayor and his administration, the council could not let this terrible situation continue. It is a black eye on the community. But nobody listens. For example, I went to the building department over a week ago about proper foundation under a parking pad being put in. I have not heard a word from the building department or Mr. Feeney, the project manager. It's the public record now. So if... it is on public record now, so if what happens at the end of McGlorine Way Street, that sinking that's happening up there, is what happens with that parking pad, the city will be responsible, not the association. Then back to my situation. I needed to downsize due to Ruth's handicap. She needed to be on one floor. The villa seemed to be an answer to these needs. The salespeople and contractor heard my story and encouraged me to buy. Everything was working out until I moved in on 20 May, 2010. Then, as you all know, on June 12th, I put up a flag on a flagpole for Flag Day. On June 15th, I received a letter stating that I was in violation of the rules. Well, that same day, I received from the sales office the rules and regulations. In Joe's letter, he referred to the flag as a decoration. I was offended that he would stoop so low to state that an American flag is a decoration. But considering the source, I pressed forward. I was correct to put up the flag on a flagpole and leave it up all year under Mr. McGlorine's rules and regulations and guidelines. My decoration can be put up three weeks before and taken down three weeks afterwards. If I do that and put all the Flag Days on a calendar, the whole year is covered. He then threatens to take me to court. State law said it's an enforceable rule. Joe says he supersedes state law. I don't think so. My response to McGlorine refers to Chapter 6 Handbook of Rules, page 3, section 1, in his opinion that shows the American flag is unsightly and a detriment to the appearance of the development. I am stunned. I can't believe that Joe is so unpatriotic that he would make such an assessment. Joe can't even get it right in flying the flag in from City Hall that was built while he was in office as mayor. At City Hall, all three flags were at the same height. I want to thank those who corrected the situation, considering the limitations to do so. Bottom line, I won the battle but lost the war. Now, Mr. McGlorine rejects all requests for improvements around my house. And being an exempt farmer from New Jersey, I recognize that I have a far egress problem, but no one seems to care. The promised maintenance for my property is not up for par compared with the other neighbors in the villa. Energy Star Homes is still a farce in the villa. Coblenz has never been fully qualified. So I'm on a mission. I want resolution to these situations. I have already begun the process. It is presently still in the hands of the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. It was stalled once, but now is being re-investigated. But being in Summit County and Oregah, I suspect Joe's influence will travel, so I am prepared to move on to the next level of my agenda. There is presently no end to the arsenal of possibilities. And don't forget my neighbor, Al, and his problems with the management of the villa and the lack of support from the city. A total disgrace to the developer, the builder, and the community. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Dan Dorlick. Dan, would you step?
Dan Dorlick, I live at 9394 Westwood. Not coincidentally, I'm here to talk about the Westwood ordinance and the Airline Ordinance. My thoughts on this are, while I understand the council has to look at the needs of the city and the finances as a whole, I believe proper attention needs to be paid to the report on this matter generated by the city engineer. The report rates 32 streets as poor, with Westwood and Airline currently number one and number two, and noted as in need of full-depth reconstruction. That's accurate. Okay, I live there. It's horrible. I think everybody agrees with that. That's great. It's not gonna help unless we do something. Another 23 streets, as I looked at the report, currently rate fair, but show that they need full-depth repair at this point. It's not fair to those of us living on Westwood and Airline to leave these roads as they are for another season. Kicking the can further down the road while waiting for more information regarding regional income tax, forthcoming information, makes no sense, given there's more than ample amount of funds rolling in the next year to take care of these streets now. Waiting will lead to further deterioration, and if you're not gonna repair these roads now, then how long will it be before the list of roads rated poor balloons further? If we're not going to act quickly upon the recommendation of the city engineer, why generate the report in the first place? It just seems like to me. My understanding is Westwood and Airline ordinances need a vote, a yes vote, from three of the five council members, and two are currently on board. I ask that one of the three remaining members do what's in the best interest of the people they were elected to serve and agree to full-depth reconstruction to start with on Macedonia's two or three streets. That's all I got. Thanks.
John Kazmer, you're next. John?
Yeah, I'm John Kazmer, resident Chinook Trail, Macedonia. Good evening, everyone. Glad to see you all. I have some great news for the residents of Macedonia. By the way, I represent the Longwood Manor Historical Society in Macedonia. We're a group of non-paid residents who are restoring the Longwood Manor in Longwood Park. That was the home of the first mayor of Macedonia, William Long. He donated, he willed the house to the residents in his will when he died. We've received word from the Ohio Preservation Office in Columbus that the notification letters are going out this week to Mayor Kuchka and the council president, Dave Engel, that the Longwood Manor will be placed on the National Register of Historic Places. This is the most prestigious award that a historic property can receive. In order to qualify for this, Longwood Manor had to do a very detailed application package to the state, which included research on the history, architecture, and the significance of the Longwood Manor, along with over 100 pictures of every square inch of the house inside and outside were sent in. The process took many, many hours. Part of it entailed going to the Western Reserve Historic Archives in Cleveland for materials, and there is a lot of material on Colonel Long in the Cleveland Archives, if you ever visited downtown. So the application information is reviewed in Columbus by a panel of experts to be certain the property qualifies to be placed on the register before they do the nomination. Residents can be very proud that their inheritance, the home of the first mayor, is going to get the recognition that it deserves. And I also want to remind people about our two fundraisers coming up. We are... we do the restoration with donations, fundraisers. There's no tax money involved at all in what we have accomplished, and we've accomplished a lot. We're having a fundraiser again at the Blue Willow, Saturday, June 21st. That's 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And July 20th, noon to 4:00 p.m. at Casa de Angelo's. That's a new one for us. That should be fantastic. That's a family restaurant. It's 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, so bring your, you know, bring your children. We're also participating in the Macedonia Garage Sale, and we have something very unusual this year that's going to be at our tables at the garage sale. This past year, we took off the old roof on the Longwood Manor, a lot of it, not all of it. It's the original slate that was on the house. We're painting it now. We have an art instructor that made a stencil with the Longwood Manor, so we're painting these sections of the original slate. So you can buy a piece of history of Longwood Manor, Macedonia history. It's from the house that's going on the National Register, so maybe it'll be worth something. And we're also participating in the Community Festival, June 6th, 5th, 7th, and 8th. And Angela says there will be electricity available. Okay, so we'll be able to plug in our computer and do a PowerPoint presentation again. We did that two years ago at Mayor Long Day, and we'll do another one now. We've got long material now in our progress. Thanks, Juan.
John, I have to compliment you on your tenacity. Unbelievable. You did it. Congratulations.
That took a lot of work.
Yes, it did. All right, next we have the Honorable Mark Sagalkov, the mayor of Glen Willow with us, longtime friend of Macedonia, and his engineer, Mike Henry. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, department heads, and members of the audience. We're here in front of you today, and Mike Henry is our engineer with me, to talk about a subject in regards to the Richmond-Broadway intersection. And as you may know, that intersection was improved recently. But I want to go back to about four years ago when we started the planning of this project, where we wanted to improve that intersection. As you all well know, it was, the intersection was not aligned correctly ever. And so it was our goal with the Village of Oakwood to try and get funding to improve that intersection for safety reasons and to align it properly. So with that, Oakwood and Glen Willow put together a plan, and we executed that plan, and we were able to successfully get community development block grant funds from Cogga County and as well as OPWC funds from the state of Ohio. At that time, we were in the planning process. We did meet with Macedonia and the city of Twinsburg about the possibility of them applying for funds to Summit County to do the improvements that were necessary in Summit County as well while we were doing that project. And we all know it's difficult to do a project in your own community by yourself, let alone trying to do a project that includes two communities, and in this case, four communities and two counties. So we undertook that project, we undertook that task, and we applied for funding for those agencies, and we were able to get that funding. So with that, we did meet with the mayor, and he expressed, you know, some reservations because of the funding issues and et cetera with Macedonia, what needed improvements to be done. But we still want, we're here today to explain to council and the audience about that intersection, what it looked like before briefly, what it's designed to look like should Macedonia put it on their radar to do these improvements, and how well it would improve the, you know, safety of that intersection. In addition to that, as you all know, there's culvert issues in Macedonia that cause, you know, flooding that run over Broadway into Glen Willow, and the recent floods demonstrated that, those problems for us recently. So our engineer's gonna talk about some of those items. He has some handouts to pass out, and we'll briefly go over that. And at the end, I just would like you, as members of council and the mayor, to put this project on your capital improvement project list. Keep it in mind. Possibly apply for funding through OPWC or your funding sources in Summit County, and do what's necessary to improve that safety of the intersection. It's already designed for those improvements to be done in Macedonia. It's a matter of putting that cost together, possibly in a grant application, and try and get funding to do those improvements. So with that, our engineer is here today, Mike Henry, and he's gonna briefly talk about that project and the improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and council, for letting us talk here tonight. What's taken place is we've realigned Richmond Road, which goes north-south into Shepherd. In doing that, we've tried to line up the northbound, or I'm sorry, the southbound with Shepherd Road's southbound direction. So we've got the alignment correct, and with the final process, we've also added in mastarm poles. So we've provided traffic, so it goes in two phases. So you get a north-south and then an east-west. Before we did the alignment, we had to have three phases, which obviously takes longer. It takes another cycle to get through that intersection. So by lining up the Richmond Road with Shepherd, we allowed to go two phases, which reduces the cycle time, which allows more traffic to facilitate and to get through the intersection quicker. In working with Oakwood and Glen Willow together, we basically get everything in Cogga County. And that's out there now. And what we've done is we have a gourd area, a striped area, that if Twinsburg and Macedonia go ahead forward with the project to the south, then we can reduce or revise the striping so that the through traffic would be, we'd have a through traffic lane, and then we'd have a left turn lane for each north and southbound. On the second sheet, basically what we have is the quadrants that would be improved as part of the next phase. So the red would be Macedonia's portion, the yellow or gold color would be Oakwood's portion, and then the blue would be Twinsburg's. Macedonia is kind of the next logical step on this process. We have the mastarm set back far enough to allow this turn lane that's in Oakwood to just follow through and then go out to Macedonia. But Oakwood can't do theirs until after Macedonia does their additional lane, which would line up perfectly with our north-south line coming off of Richmond to Shepherd Road, which would allow a left turn lane in both Shepherd and on Richmond, which would allow that left turn lane. I don't know if anybody's ever been to Glen Willow, and you head south about 5:00 to 5:30. There's a line of traffic that kind of backs up. We've kind of reduced that a little bit, but with that left turn lane in both directions, it'd be much more beneficial and would help, I think, both communities. And then Twinsburg and Oakwood, Oakwood couldn't come after that. I think the projects could be done at the same time. And then Twinsburg, obviously, would be beneficial making the right turn onto Richmond Road and allowing that traffic in the morning to flow more freely. And if we've, we also, this was our first phase, the second phase has just got, has just been taking place is the roundabout. I don't know if anybody's been up there with the roundabout as well. It's kind of worked out pretty well. So we're trying to get everything, the Phase 1, Phase 2 approach. So just like to thank you for the consideration of this and to just bring it to the forefront.
Well, you did a great job explaining it, Mike, Mark. I really feel this project has so much merit because of four communities, two counties working together. I don't know if that's ever been done before. I apologize for the fact that we haven't been able to follow through so far. But Macedonia faces, we're located in a county with Akron, all right? That's tough. I give Don Pasqualek a lot of credit for being tenacious because a lot of the funding goes to Akron, and we have a tough time trying to get anything funded. That's a bad... The good news, more funding sources have opened up to us. So we're gonna be on it for you and try and make this work because it absolutely has merit. And thank you on behalf of our residents for what you've done to this point.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your consideration.
Very good, very good presentation.
All right, next is Michael Miller.
Yeah, he's been there. It looks like the Blues.
Michael Miller, Berkshire Drive. I have in my hand the invitations that will go tomorrow to 40 graduates of the Ohio Volunteer Certified Naturalist Class for this year. And I'm inviting them to come to Longwood Park throughout the rest of the year and to explore the park, to discover the park, to measure the trees and count them and find the salamanders and mammals that live here, and to record and document and gather data about our park. It is one of the largest municipal parks in Ohio. Most people forget that. There's a couple hundred acres and 35 more at Sugar Bush that are worthy of being explored and to gather information about. And we'll be asking the Audubon Society and the state of Ohio and the Ohio State Extension Service to declare Longwood Park an important birding area, which will further protect the options that our residents will have at the park. It's free, and it'll put Longwood Park on the real mover and shaker's map as far as a place to come. And look, we have ledges, and we have caves, and we have waterfalls, we have vernal pools, we have grasslands, we have wetlands 1, 2, and 3, and it's the best kept secret in town. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. You've always been the guy who's going after stuff for our car. Next, we have Lawrence Sangstock. Borf?
Hi. Hello. Don't start the clock on me until I announce some things here to Josephine. This is a review, for your records. Two each. He has.
Two each. Oh, okay. I see.
Thanks. I haven't hit any toes here. We didn't need to. I'll be out here. And that now is... Oh, we'll get it there. All right, thank you. My name's Lauren Sangstock. I reside at 2704 Albert Glenn Road, Twinsburg. For those that may not know, I'll give just a short background on myself. I've retired in 2012. I spent more than twenty-two years in public service as a finance director or assistant finance director in the Ohio cities of Pepper Pike, Macedonia, Huron, and Savania, along with Grand Ledge, Michigan. My responsibilities and duties included financial treasury management, budget administration, accounting, payroll, human resources, income tax, and utility billing administration, purchasing, and legal audit compliance with all city laws and charters. I've also held marketing and regional sales consulting positions for over thirteen years with several fund...public fund accounting software development firms, Software Solutions, Fund Balance Inc., Tyler Technologies, both in Ohio and Michigan. I'm currently a retired finance director, but also a citizen auditor. And with Citizen Auditors of Ohio, we review, analyze, and prepare financial analysis reports of government units for use in financial forecasting based upon averaging and trending of historical financial data. These people all out here wondering, what is he talking about? These audited financial reports are extremely large in a lot of cases, but as a citizen auditor, what I try to do with my website at www.citizenauditorohio.com is try to educate and teach average citizens what government accounting is, fund accounting is, and that's primarily why I'm here this evening. I wanted to introduce myself to the public. A lot of people here also know that I was here as deputy finance director and finance director for many years. It seemed like a lot more than just five or five and a half. But I wanted to present the mayor and city council with several financial reports with Mr. R.C.C. distributed this evening. What these are are kind of summarized graphic representations of the last ten years of both what is I call the big picture, which is your governmental funds, and those are grouping, for folks that don't know, of your general funds, special revenue funds, your debt service funds, and capital improvement funds. Those are the major operating funds with which the city provides all of what you would call services, police, fire protection, EMTs, street departments, street cleaning, snowplowing, paying the debt services on, like, the buildings and things of that nature, as well as improvements to storm sewer, et cetera, and your roads and a lot of other infrastructure. I also, at the request of the mayor, did a review of just your general funds. And the city actually has three classified general funds. That would be your, what is called, general fund, which most communities have. You also have a reserve fund for emergencies as well as a retirement reserve fund. And what I really want to talk about tonight, because I'm not here to get into every little detail of those reports, to give you something to look at, give you some ideas, some other recommendations to consider. I would like to let these reports look at what they are, and that's a historic perspective. And with the major component...what this comprises what I consider major components and building blocks for financial forecasting. They also contain multiple comments, recommendations. However, in a limited time allocated this evening, I want to comment on just a few major issues and ideas that I'd like to promote. One is sustainability. It's a term you hear a lot of nowadays in government as well as individuals, but the con...it is a concept of applying recurring annual revenues to recurring annual program costs. The city of Macedonia has long contended with balancing its budgets and faced many challenges, and I was here for some of them. The city has laid off workers, workers have gone without pay raises, and necessary capital projects have been delayed, and those result in higher costs to everyone. The taxpayers provided a three-year quarter percent increase in income taxes, which allowed the returning of laid off workers and some needed capital projects. However, that was sunset as of the end of 12/31/2013. The city once again faces, in my opinion, an unsure future regarding the sustainability of all your current programs and the need to address capital improvements and all of your infrastructure needs. As a citizen auditor and non-resident of Macedonia, I can only recommend that city council allow the resident taxpayers of this community an opportunity to establish a revenue source that could be earmarked or dedicated to capital projects. And if it's successfully approved by the voters, the city would have a dedicated revenue source to address your $60.8 million worth of infrastructure, which you have to sustain in this city. It's what's registered on your annual report. A lot of people may not know that. You have sixty, almost $61 million. In my opinion, if you look at that, you really do require, just now as you'd have in years past, somewhere around $2 million plus a year. Roads and storm sewers alone make up $36 million or fifty-nine percent of your total governmental capital assets as of the end of 2012. Macedonia, like many other communities, is simply unable to address its capital needs long-term. Cutting costs, although soundingly could correct, has proven in most instances to be inadequate to contend with the real issue, and that is the recurring investments required for your roads, storm sewers, water lines, public buildings, and safety service equipment. Therefore, I'd recommend that council seriously consider looking and evaluating the long-term implications of looking at some revenue source dedicated just to capital improvements. The other issue is, and these are things that are not just here in Macedonia but everywhere, and that's one that I recommend highly, and that is a minimum fund balance policy. This is another recommendation as a citizen auditor with a lot of years' experience, the city council should explore, and it's simply a method whereby council and the administration can arrive at a minimum carryover of your fund's balance. Get a number out there that's actually strategically arrived at. In the future, with a minimum fund balance policy, the administration would know clearly and precisely where they need to budget to in order to sustain that balance, as well as plan and budget accordingly to achieve the goals and objectives to provide for the public health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. The third thing I want to talk about is a five-year financial forecast and planning. With the reality of federal and state reductions in intergovernmental revenue sharing, along with the loss of Ohio state taxes that have been eliminated, and considering the variable risks in other revenue sources, more communities are turning to a three- to five-year financial forecast in...to address their financial planning. The city of Macedonia's last five-year plan was done in 2009 with then-finance director Stephen Bruno, who I served with as his deputy. Mr. Bruno was ahead of his time in pioneering the concepts for a community of your size and complexity. And folks, you do have a very complex operation here. When you think of the size and magnitude of $61 million, it's a lot of infrastructure, a lot of public assets to take care of. Your plan for this should be transparent, available to the public, so they can understand the complex issues your community is facing and providing for all the programs currently in place, and what maintaining $60.8 million in capital assets requires. Thomas Jefferson once said, quote, "Information is the currency of democracy," end quote. That visionary statement is more appropriate in our modern information superhighway today more than ever before. In summary, please review these reports, contact me with any questions, issues, or concerns that you might have. Most communities are better served when the city council administrations work together in providing the financial planning necessary to provide for the public health, safety, and welfare of their citizens. It is my recommendation to leave the political agendas and bickering to the state and federal governments, as local governments are the last bastion of sanity in this country. The public relies on our local governments daily for our essential public services and safety. Without our local government standing by, ready to serve us, the public stands in harm's way alone. The definition of first responders is local government, public servants. God bless them all. I'd like to also take this opportunity to remember with gratitude this nation's fallen veterans, sacrifices of their families, as we prepare to honor them on Memorial Day. Their ultimate sacrifice is a reminder that freedom is not free. May God bless this nation, and may we all never forget the price paid for our inalienable rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my opinions. I look forward to being of help in any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. There's two types of audits that are performed on governments. One is procedural, and the other is a performance audit. Way back when Steve Brinow was here and Lauren, I started asking for a performance audit. A performance audit compares us to other cities so that we can maybe have a roadmap of where we're making mistakes or what we could do better. And procedural is what we get every year we're audited, all right? So what is procedural? It's like, how fast do you get the money to the bank after you collect it? The auditors want to know that. You must get that money there in 24 hours. They go over things on how we handle the money, but how can we best spend the money? And I asked Lauren, and he came here and provided all this information to us at no charge. Thank you. I really, really appreciate it. I hope we can gain something from all the effort that you put forth to bring us these documents. And it's not to say that we're doing anything wrong, but in order to be transparent, in order to be listening to the voters and doing the best you can with that tax dollar, you've got to always, always be looking for a better way to do it. So thank you for what you've done for Macedonia. I appreciate it.
Well, I'm glad to do it, Mayor.
All right, that's our last speaker for this evening. And we're going to move right into pending in our new legislation. Tonight, we're going to start off a little bit out of order because we've got some new members of our family to offer, who are growing. We have our safety forces. I feel so proud of them because of where we are compared to so many other communities. I think we have a top-notch police department and fire department, and that's not only coming from inside and from me, but that's from the outside recognition that we get for our police and fire department. Actually, our fire department is rated in the top one percent of the country. That's pretty cool. That's a good thing. So we're going to start off tonight with ordinance number 49-2014.
I'd like to offer resolution number 49-2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
A resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Michelle...
Ellis.
Ellis, to the position of full-time dispatcher. Thank you.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law. Resolution number 49-2014, please.
Second.
And what's your pleasure? And let me have a roll call, please.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number 49-2014 passes. Can I ask you to stand up? Are you here?
Ms. Ellis couldn't attend. She has a family function tonight.
Thank you, Lauren.
The mayor, council, the chief, just, and the lieutenant wanted me to pass along their gratitude for allowing the hire of her, and that Michelle, I don't know if you guys are aware, is a resident of Macedonia, and she'll be a welcomed addition to the police department and fire department.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance number 50-2014.
I'd like to offer ordinance 50-2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Eric Anderson to the position of part-time firefighter.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 50-2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number 50-2014 passes. Eric, would you stand, please? There he is. How you doing?
Yes, sir, are you?
Welcome.
Thank you.
And do you have anybody here with you that you can introduce us to?
Yes, my family, my father, my mother, and my sister and her fiance.
Father and mother, you did a good job. Thank you. Thank you. All right, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to ordinance number 51-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 51-2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Jesse Johnson to the position of part-time firefighter.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 51-2014 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number 51-2014 passes. Jesse? There he is. Welcome, and introduce your family to us, please.
I brought the whole gang here. My favorite aunt and uncle, my beautiful fiance, Jackie, future parents here, and a future sister.
Very good.
Very supportive people. Thank you.
Good job, Karen. Again, we're glad to have you. You know, I have to be somebody special to work here, so we're very glad to have men of his caliber.
Looking forward to that. One percent there. You guys.
Moving on, ordinance number 52-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 52-2014 for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Paul J. Solinsky to the position of part-time firefighter.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 52-2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
When I first read this one, I thought, I think he already works here, and I was a little confused. But obviously, it's your son, and the legacy is amazing, and glad to have you. Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Absolutely, yes.
Ordinance number 52-2014 passes. Paul, please stand and introduce your family to us.
Thank you, Mayor. I got my mother and father here with me, my sister Rebecca, and my two uncles, Uncle Loki and Glenn Nigl. Thank you very much.
Wow. And you've been doing this around this city for your whole life, almost?
Yeah. Been with the city my whole life, been with the Macedonia Fire Explorers since I was fourteen. Actually, I have two explorers with me today, David and Christian.
Hi, Dave, Christian.
Dave.
All right. All right. All right, could you stand?
All the highries.
All the highries stand. Of course. We're glad to have you. And now, what we're going to do is, if you would like to leave at this time, we'll just give you some time to leave before we get into the rest of the meeting. We have a lot more legislation, unless you really, really want to.
Thank you.
I'm shocked.
We've got a lot of work to do yet, starting with ordinance number 38-2014.
Mayor, just a little background. This is for the airline, air lane, I'm sorry, improvement project. In the work session prior to the meeting, there was a long conversation about where we wanted to have with this. I wanted to go to third reading, but there's still only two votes to support it. Again, I would ask one of the three folks over there to change your vote and support this for passage tonight.
I did too, but we're politicking.
That's no from all three?
I thought we'd had an agreement that there was going to be a finance meeting and we were going to discuss the other road that's been added and that's been... And the request for an increase in taxes. And also, as part of that, we're going to hold off on the charter review commission. I thought that's what you agreed to, Nick.
Well, given the safety aspects of the situation, I wanted to ask again for one of you to reconsider. I understand, Dave, and I did agree to that, but I really think this is a safety issue. This is not politics, as I heard you say.
It is a safety issue, but it is politics, Nick.
No, it's not.
We can shoot from the hip, or we can have all the facts and be here on the 12th and make the vote then. So, it's whatever you want to do. But I'm not going to support it until I have, until we have all the facts. You heard there was contradictory opinions from our finance director as to what we need to do to make sure that we maintain the financial stability of the city, which is equally as important as getting these roads repaired. And we need to have all the information before we make the vote. The vote can be made June 12th, and I have pledged that I will vote on June 12th, so...
Hey, Scott, if we pass this tonight for the 200, was it 270 total? I'm sorry. Will this destroy our financial stability of this community? Will this put us in a position where we will have a financial liability in any way?
No, it won't. It's just going to shorten us again on the carryover balance to next year.
So it shortens the carryover, it will not destroy our financial abilities in the future. So that's a little bit different from what we heard in the work session.
But the recommendation in the Rex, in the Work Center was that we have the issue of the tax levy resolved too. And I think the two are so acutely related that we need to do that, Nick. So, I think we should do this on the 12th. And I think you're playing politics, as you have been for the last three months.
Politics, interesting. Safety? For that reason, then I'm going to offer ordinance number 38-2014 for its third reading by title only.
Second.
It doesn't need a second. An ordinance amending ordinance number 26-2014 in order to appropriate funds for the air lane drive improvement project.
I make a motion to table ordinance 38-14.
Second.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Why would you take?
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
No.
And Ms. Tully?
I don't, you know, we could study this till we're blue on the face. And I understand, you know, the concern for the future. We were told tonight it would not put us in financial liability, that we need to plan for 2017 and beyond. We're not talking, but that we have time to do that. We had asked for a finance meeting that is now scheduled, but it wasn't scheduled when originally requested. We asked for it in lieu of the streets meeting because we already had all the street information. I have to vote for this to go forward, but I will not vote to table it or put it, hold it at second reading, so I'm a no. So it's tabled?
It's tabled.
I'm sorry, sir, I thought you were looking at me.
Moving on, ordinance number 39-2014.
I'd like to offer ordinance 39-2014 for its third reading by title only.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to table ordinance 39-2014.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
No.
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes. Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Just to point this out one more time, to call this politics is ridiculous, Dave. It's embarrassing. The fact that these folks are sitting here pleading with us for their safety of their road, I mean, I told you in the work session that a car could bottom out, it's that bad. And to do nothing now, it's embarrassing. It really is.
It's embarrassing that you're willing to proceed without all the, all the facts and figures and the financials. We have to be concerned about 2017. I'm asking you for, what, three weeks?
2017 we're worried about.
Yeah, well, if you remember, 10 years ago, we ended the, ended the budget, the year budget with $14,000. I'm not going to go back to that. It took us 10 years to buy our way out of the last mistake that the council had did before I became a member of council. I'm not going to put the city back in that position again.
Dave, when I came on council, we rolled over $50,000. My first year, I walked into a $50,000 carryover. This year, we started with 3.5 million, and we're not going to pave a road.
And we're not, we are going to pave a road.
3.5 million.
We are going to pave a road.
Wait, wait. Wait a year.
We, let's just talk about, let's talk about safety here. I've been hearing a lot of stuff about safety. And we have many roads that have major problems where there is a safety issue. And what we're trying to do is, given the funding we have, look at all of the options in terms of which roads we have to repair, which we can use techniques other than a full-depth repair. And we're going to do that. We have, we're getting some information for purposes of doing this and the financial information we need to make a decision about how many we can do. That's all. We are not trying to, you know, this implication is made that we don't want to spend any money on roads. That is absolutely false. We are going to spend money. We have said, from the financial planning standpoint, we were going to look at this issue in an orderly manner. That's what we're going to do. And I think that all of that, you know, the attitude that's being expressed by Mr. Mulner and all this disposition really comes down to this. We have X amount of money. We cannot be spending on every road that has a problem this year, unfortunately. There, that has been going on for quite a while, the last few years. We, even when we've had additional money, we already heard that we haven't done a proper job in maintaining the roads. So, all we're doing is saying we've got choices we have to make. We are not saying anything beyond that. We say we're going to do it, and the decision will be made June 12th. And it, whatever decision is made, we will be doing that this year.
Did you say the decision will be made this year? I didn't get the vote yet. I'm ready.
In any case, we are going to be making the decision on June 12th. And I think we can do that because we have to know where we're at financially. That's all the problem is. It has nothing to do with not being concerned about people's safety. Everybody's concerned about it. And if we had been doing as what we should have been doing, there would not be as many problems like this.
Boy, I take the issue with that. I mean, if we would have did what we should have been doing, we've been fixing the street a year ever since I've been mayor and paying for it.
Which is part of the problem, which we had to buy, buy our way out of before the council, before...
No.
No, Mayor, I'm, I'm supporting you on that. Before you were mayor, before I was on council, the council then had over $2 million in road notes, and they had no way to pay for it. That's why we're, the city was in such a financial disaster for the last 10 years, including the recession we went through. We're just trying to make sure we don't end up like that again. I agree, we need to be responsible, and we'll make the decision on June 12th.
Moving on with...
No, wait, wait. I haven't got a chance to vote. I get to vote before we move on. Part of the issue I have of why we'll vote no...
I thought we voted.
We had, I have not voted yet on the table. You were speaking. I did not want to interrupt.
Okay.
We put a budget together, or shall I say, a budget was put together by one council member who I don't see, from square one, there was no discussion or interaction with the right departments to assure that we had money set aside for roads. And then, when there was an administration budget meeting for them to put forth what they needed, I was the only council member who attended. I would not, so, we're going to study it again. We're going into month number six, and we're going to keep studying it. And my apologies, I vote no to table.
Moving on, ordinance number 45-2014.
Okay, we're holding that a second.
Alright, moving on to ordinance number 47-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 47-2014 for its first reading by title only.
Alright, so just for purposes of clarity, well...
We've skipped two. We didn't put them on the agenda.
Well, I know that we have, and so that, let's, the law director know that. So that, they've, taking the two after 45, okay? Taking it off, or just not...
Top of the second page. No numbers on those other two yet?
No.
No, so that, the, the new number 47 will be the income tax.
Top of the page, okay.
Okay?
Ordinance number 47-2014, I'm sorry, first reading? First reading, testing?
Oh, who offered, Ms. Hannekin said yes. Just give me a second. An emergency ordinance amending sections 181-03A, 181-04, 181-06A, and 181-14A of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia and Ohio in order to increase the city's current income tax rate to that which existed last year, 2013, at 2 and 1/4% for road improvements and stormwater projects, and providing for 100% resident tax credit, and submitting the same to the electors on November 4th, 2014.
Alright, we're giving this a first reading tonight, just so that all the people out there can start asking questions about it, start to learn about it. It is a tax increase that absolutely will not affect Macedonia residents unless you work in Macedonia. And that's me. Alright? So, this, this is a city income tax increase of a quarter percent. That's what we lost at the end of last year. If we reinstitute that this November, get it on the ballot, let the people decide, that itself will be an accomplishment. So, I'm urging that we at least let the people decide what they want to do. This would be long-term so that we could keep fixing roads. Alright, ordinance number 48-2014.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 48-2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Christopher Griffiths to the position of full-time recreation membership and special programs coordinator.
And what's your pleasure?
I'd move that we pass and post according to law. Resolution number, or I'm sorry, ordinance number 48-2014, please.
Roll call.
What was the second on that?
Second.
Mr. Engel? Excuse me, Ms. Darrow? I'm sorry. Just... I kind of like that idea. Go, start here and then work your way down. I wish we could do that. Before I take my vote, I just wanted to say that I had already made a commitment to support another gentleman that was offered this job, and I vote no. Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hannekin?
No.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Well, before I vote, we need some explanations on the floor here. First of all, no job was ever offered to anyone else. Second of all, we had an agreement, there was a meeting held with Counselor Darrow and Hannekin, the mayor, and our Parks Department head. When there was discussion of who was going to be hired and they had concern that they had not done due diligence, the agreement was a second round of advertising, which cost between $600 and $800, would be expended. We would go through another 60 to 90-day process to wait for a candidate. Ms. Darrow said she might be disappointed, but she would respect the choice that was made out of the second round, as well as Ms. Hannekin said she would go with whatever was decided out of the second round. Those are two promises now broken. This process, there are over 100 applicants the first time around. Second time around, there were 31 applicants. I have the resumes of the gentlemen that they proposed versus the gentleman that was selected. No names on it, was just given the resumes. The experience level that this person would bring to the table is unmatched. The experience to be able to immediately go back to work to benefit the city is unfounded. I heard tonight in the work session, well, why did they leave? Well, they were in concern of the job based on potential membership loss. And as someone who works in the public sector, I don't, well, in the private sector, we have that happen all the time. People leave when they believe their job is in jeopardy. I can name quite a few that happened in the past couple of years at my corporation. They're now back at the same corporation. Came back. Because the question was, why would you leave? Why would you come back? If you liked your job, but you had the fear that it was going away, and there might be something better to try, you do that. That's the way of business. I am very disappointed that people made promises their word is not gold.
First of all, I don't make a promise.
Excuse me, I'm not done. The other thing is, there was a comment made about something that was made in, that I said about cooperation, participation, working together, and that you thought that was really good, Ms. Darrow. I vote yes. I think we're doing a disservice to this Parks Department because we're going to go, this is in the budget. And oh, by the way, we're legislative, and we're the budget. Did you vet all the police officers that were being hired? Did you vet the dispatcher who was being hired? I'm so confused of why you'd believe the department head does not have the capability, the knowledge, to pick the best candidate. Oh, by the way, Parks and Rec Board also vetted and agreed this person was the best candidate. I don't want to forget them because that's the discussion we had the other night in the Parks and Rec meeting.
Angela, as mayor, I'm ordering you to hire this man immediately. Whatever happens, happens. And if we're going to spend money to fight this decision instead of fixing roads, it's a sad day in Macedonia. Moving on, ordinance number 48-2014.
That's how we did that.
Sorry, 53. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 53-2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only. its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of two Kenworth T-30 trucks from Kenworth of Richfield for use by the Macedonia Service Department for snow plowing purposes.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number fifty-three, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Jim, would you take a moment and explain what, what's happening here?
These are two pieces of equipment that we desperately need. I'm actually going to be replacing one of our trucks that's seventeen years old. What we're going to be able to do is take the body off that truck and put it on one of the new chassis, saving us some money there. And then, finance, we'll put it on dot gov, and we'll put it up for sale. So, we'll receive money from that. The second truck that it's replacing is our truck, two thousand one international, that we've had many problems with. We've put a lot of money into that truck. So, it's, we're going, what we'll do with that one is, we've got a price, what we could get for a trade, and we're going to trade that. We're going to go on dot gov also and sell that truck. But, there are two trucks that are desperately needed to upgrade our, our department.
Okay. I've lost my place.
Number fifty-four.
Fifty-four, thank you.
Next page.
Ordinance number fifty-four, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number fifty-four, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of snow plow packages for installation on two new trucks to be purchased by the city service department from Henderson Truck Equipment.
And what's your pleasure?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pass and post according to law, ordinance number fifty-four, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-four, two thousand and fourteen passes. Ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
An emergency ordinance amending section one forty-five, oh-three, of the codified ordinances regarding the Civil Service Commission members.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, briefly before I give that, essentially what this is, is cleaning up some language that was discovered and brought to my attention. So, that's the intention of it. I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance fifty-five, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-five, two thousand and fourteen passes. Ordinance number fifty-six, two thousand and fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance fifty-six, two thousand and fourteen, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance appropriating of funds for the use by the service department for the road repair at three-eight-three Janes Lane.
Moving on, ordinance number fifty-seven, two thousand and fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance fifty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending the twenty-fourteen annual appropriations ordinance number twenty-six, fourteen.
Moving on, ordinance number fifty-eight dash two thousand and fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number fifty-eight, two thousand and fourteen, for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Oh, second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
An ordinance amending the twenty-fourteen annual appropriations ordinance twenty-six, twenty-fourteen.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and fourteen, for, that, I'm, excuse me, I would move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance fifty-eight, two thousand and fourteen. Before we vote, Scott, would you please explain what ordinance fifty-eight's all about? Because we have three ordinances, all with the same name. We're going to pass two, we're not going to pass one. So, maybe if you could give a few minutes so the citizens know why we're voting on fifty-eight.
There's also a typo on this, I want to make sure, clarify. What this is just doing is moving.
It was fixed, Mr.?
Moving funds from the service department salary and wages down to the service department part-time wages. It's just a.
So, it's a change within, from one wage category to another wage category, and it's budget neutral in the sense that we're not, we're not encumbering additional funds.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think Josephine had indicated that the, the number that we requested before, we changed that before it was introduced.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Your honor, our mayor, we're ready to vote.
I need a second, sir.
Second.
Roll, roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Fifty-eight, two thousand and fourteen passes. Fifty-nine, two thousand and fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the twenty-fourteen annual appropriations ordinance twenty-six, twenty-fourteen.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I move that we pass and post ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand and fourteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
I'm voting yes, and I just want to say that these are some minor adjustments in appropriation, primarily having to do with obligations from the contract for the firefighters. And there's some senior snow plowing program adjustments because of the very large snowstorms we've had this year, and some overtime that relates to snow plowing. So, it's generally fairly minor adjustments.
Uh, Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
These aren't minor adjustments. These are things that I have concerns that we didn't care for originally. Planning enough on overtime, planning on the uniforms. We know how many people we have. We know how much is in the contract. I'm voting yes, but we really need to make sure that of the items that were over are all addressed in our finance meeting.
All right, that's it for the ordinances tonight, unless there's any motions or other legislative action.
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the director of finance to accept on the behalf of the city of Macedonia, a two thousand and fourteen litter cleanup and tire amnesty grant agreement from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency in the amount of twenty-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars for use prior to June two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? A little description about how this money will be used?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is an eighty-twenty grant by the Ohio EPA, and that, not, last year, we had something that the city paid for, and we had an Earth Day, where we had litter cleanup, and the fire explorers were out about, and we paid for the bags and a lot of other equipment. This money will be used, we actually have twenty-four sixty, will be used for that, to promote Earth Day, have some roll-off dumpsters on-site, like we did last year, and give away free tree sealing, and maybe some other amenities that would, and promotions that'll make people have a better awareness of the litter and prevention in the area.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other motions or legislative action?
I'd like to make a motion authorizing, authorizing the director of recreation to accept on behalf of the city of Macedonia sponsorship donations to the two thousand and fourteen Spirit of Macedonia Community Festival from the following: one thousand dollars from Cobra Plastics, five hundred dollars from Summit Dental Specialist Incorporated, five hundred dollars from Jet Systems Incorporated, and one hundred dollars from Proquip Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Are there any other motions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion canceling the regular council meetings of June twenty-sixth, July tenth, and August fourteenth of two thousand and fourteen, for the purpose of summer recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
Uh, we need a roll call.
Oh, I can do it. Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right, are there, there are no other motions? All right, we're going to move on then. Correspondents from the court.
I have just one, sir. Dear Chief Black and the members of C-Shift, I wish, commend you for the excellent, efficient, and competent and caring firemen you have on your rescue squad. I have been assisted by them in the past for a few medical emergencies, and they've always been a, a professional, courteous, capable, caring, and prompt. On Monday, April twenty-first, around one P.M., I called nine-one-one because my un, my husband injured his toe, injured his foot, inju, oi. Injured his foot, severing his toe. It's a little hard to read when you think about this whole process, what he did. Their preliminary measures increase the chances for my husband to keep his toe. We deeply indebted to these wonderful men who work without thanks every day while many times putting their lives at risk. I regret, I do not know their names, and I would like to definite, definitely mention them here. Please give them my many thanks from Billy and Rosalynn Batson on East Highland Road for their excellent care.
All right, that's it?
Wow.
Yes.
Yes, that is, it got goosebumps, actually. Sorry.
Yeah, that, that was serious. All right, moving on to the mayor's report. Free mulch is available, but not as much.
You want some of this?
Because there are some people who mix junk with their branches, and it ruins the mulching machine. Please, don't mix junk with your branches, anything that pop cans, all that kind of stuff. It comes in like that, and then it tears up the mulcher. And it costs us a ton of money to keep fixing the mulcher because all this stuff's mixed in between it. I believe last autumn, we lost two leaf pickup machines for a while because they picked up stuff under the leaves. And then that ruins it for everybody, all right? So, please, make sure that there's not anything mixed up with that, so that we can have more free mulch and better leaf pickup. More and more is happening at the state level that has an effect on your local municipal government. They keep hitting us right where it hurts, right in the pocket. The deal was, we, as municipalities, would get a portion of state sale tax. Too bad the deal was only sealed with a handshake because they're breaking. And speaking of hitting below the belt, many of our residents are getting mail from the dreaded Cleveland Water Bully. In the letter there warned, you must get new clear read meters installed within the next thirty days, or your water will be shut off. They might even put toothpicks under your fingernails, or take your firstborn child. This is not the first time residents have been held hostage for their water. The Northeast Ohio Regional Sore District, N.E.O.R.S.D., made the same threat to our residents. If we don't pay their stormwater fees, sending our money to Chilahoga County, they will shut off your city water. Let's see how you can fill, fill in the blanks. This is blank, blank, blank. Fill it in, and it starts with B.U. bureaucracy. You thought I was going to say something else. Bureaucracy is a form of government where we are the peons and the water barons rule. I'm sorry I can't stop them from threatening you. We've actually taken the N.E.O.R.S.D. to court over their threats. We lost the first round, then we won the second round. Now it's being appealed in Supreme Court. But you need to do what the water department tells you to. But if there are any problems, Councilman Molnar brought this to my attention, and he met with me and the people from the water department, and on our website, we have something a lot of people don't have. At least, it's a name you can call. If you just call the water department, have reading material, because you'll be doing a lot of reading, waiting, waiting, and probably never be taken care of. So, if you have a problem, now, what kind of problem? How about putting in a water meter backwards? That's happening in Macedonia. And then, it doesn't work. And, boy, you know, this is great. I don't have to pay for water. And you get a bill for a thousand bucks. Now, you got to watch these people when they're working in your house. I would really like to see us pursue Akron water just because we can. I have in pass, it was interrupted by open-heart surgery. It is possible to get Akron water because it runs to the old Chrysler stamping plant, and it also runs to Hudson. It would take serious negotiation and time, and the initial cost was never available for us to spend. I did spend a lot of time talking to Dennis Plow, though. Dennis is the mayor of Wesley, and we had lunch a couple of times. And I don't know if you remember, but Wesley got out of Cleveland Water, and Cleveland Water came back after their customers with ten thousand dollar bills. It was terrible. It was ridiculous. And it's such a legal battle that getting his advice, I just couldn't go that route anymore. But someday, it would be possible to get Akron water here. Why would we want to do that? Because we could buy water from Akron and maintain our pipes, which some of them might be a hundred years old, and you would pay half of what you paid for Cleveland Water. And, buying it wholesale, we could sell it to our neighbors and still make some money, and they would be paying less than they paid for Cleveland Water. You know what, folks? At this point, I'd like to wish you all a happy and safe Memorial Day, and that concludes my report. So, we'll move on into committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to have a finance meeting on June tenth at seven P.M. in, in City Hall.
Any other committee report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had a planning meeting on May nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at five-thirty. Our next planning meeting will be held Monday, June sixteenth, at five-thirty. Do you want me to go, you want me to read all the things that were on the agenda?
Well, I'll tell you what, there's one very interesting thing on there, and I bet you people would like to hear about that. Do you know which one I'm referring to, Rita? They have, they have approached us about building an indoor soccer field for youths to come and play from all over. My granddaughter's involved in volleyball, and I've gone with her weekend after weekend all around, and they compete in these buildings, many, many teams and tournaments. So, Macedonia might be the site of an indoor soccer field. And the other thing, it's on property that we own, we kind of own, because of back taxes. And it's been an albatross. It's been for sale forever. All the while I've been mayor, it's been for sale. So, that's ten years at least. But that's what happens when you build a bridge, and then all of a sudden, now, property became destroyed.
Are they going to pay the back?
Are they gonna pay the back taxes to buy it, or how... Or not?
Well...
I'm confused.
Let's put it this way. The planning commission is going to conceptually approve it or disapprove it.
Where would this be?
The name of the street is Highland Point. On the corner of Highland Point, it's Highland Road, and Highland Point is Empire Digest. If you go down that street all the way to an end, there's a cul-de-sac. Off the cul-de-sac is this property. Now, this is industrial property, but it also is the backyard for some houses on South Hill. So, you know, you have to kind of be careful. We don't want the same thing to happen, uh, like has happened in Macedonia where all of a sudden people are... Have their... In their backyard, uh, uh, something with trucks coming in and out and making all kinds of fuss. So, um, this might work, and I can't say yes or no, and that's for the planning commission as a whole. If the planning commission says conceptually that they think it can work and the planner gets into it, one of the things that has to be considered is the height of the building would be 70 feet. That's, you know, because they have to kick the ball. So, it would be a very high building, and we don't allow buildings that high, so there'd probably be some Board of Zoning Appeals meetings to go to. But it's interesting, again, that Macedonia was picked, and they really, really would like to be here because of our location, location, location. So that's a good thing. Some of the other ones are pretty mundane after that. That's... That's out of the ordinary. A lot of times, unfortunately, as planning commission, we spend an evening approving signs, and that's not the most exciting thing in the world. Any other committee reports?
There was a Parks and Rec Committee meeting this past week. We spoke not only about the candidate, but we also, um... I'm not gonna steal the thunder on the festival, but we also have, uh, decided that it's time to look ahead, uh, where we're going. We know that in 2017, um, the current existing dollar that is generated will be going away. That income tax will be retired, and so we're looking at what would we like to see in parks? Not only at... Everyone always talks about Longwood, but we're also talking about Sugar Bush and Memorial Park, um, to see if we make a long-range plan. There used to be a long-range plan, and, um, it kinda got put to the wayside. So we're looking at what we can resurrect, what would be the most desirable. Very excited because the members of this committee are, um, represent all ages, so it's not gonna be, you know, okay, I run a lot, so it's gonna be a running track. So it's exciting, and we're gonna start that process. Our next meeting is July 9th.
Are there any other committee reports? There are none. Department reports, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmen. Thank you for asking for those trucks. We really need it. That's something we desperately need. In my report, I wanna let yous know that we... I did purchase the salt. We got 1,800 tons. Uh, we only had to pay for 1,500 tons. We got 300 tons free because of the inconvenience and the type of service we received this winter. So that comes to about $8,250 worth of... Of, uh, salt that, uh, we got. We didn't have to pay for it. And, uh, that gives us now, when we start next winter, I know nobody really cares because it's summertime now, I'm coming, but what, 3,000 tons of salt to start with. So we have a... A good start next winter. It's all stacked at...
That was all you. Thank you, Tom.
No, I... I wanna thank Tom Hanslack, 'cause it's nothing more powerful than a little letter from an attorney. And, uh, he got the... I mentioned it to him, and he got the ball running, and he really... He helped me out, and we... Together, we got this done.
Good teamwork.
Okay? And, uh, I'll say, just to add a little bit to what the mayor was saying about the mulch, uh, we have a big problem there. It's... We don't have the luxury of being able to see who comes in and is dumping. It usually was on a, uh, more like of a trust thing. You know, there are plenty of signs, and they say just yard materials and branches and so on. We have people that... I've had actually a huge tri-axle truck somehow got in there and dumped all his pallets there. Uh, we get railroad ties with spikes and... People are taking apart their whole decks and dropping their moth over there. It's... It's actually almost becoming like we're one big dumpster. And, uh, uh, my personal feeling on this is, you know, I... I don't have the funds to go out and keep repairing a tub grinder that doesn't belong to me. So, we weren't able to do as much mulch as we would like to have done. You can... If you go to 9,000 Valley View, you'll still see a pretty big pile there. I have to try now to make some type of arrangements to maybe, uh, another company might come, and they'll pick at the branches out of there and, uh, you know, use it for themselves to haul it away, to make their own grinders. My... My personal feeling on this is, if this continues, I need to speak to my mayor, and I need to speak to council, because we can't keep doing this kind of stuff and paying what we've paid. I paid almost $3,700, uh, to do this little bit of mulch, and I had to spend about $800 of that as repairing his tub grinder. So if this continues, my personal feeling is, then you discontinue it. I'm going to, uh... I'm just asking the residents, even if you can't police yourselves, you see somebody doing that, stop telling them, because, you know, they're gonna ruin it for everybody else, and... And I don't want to be the one to... To start this, but something has to be done, because now I have a yard of rubbish that I have to get rid of. And it costs us money, and we have to look at it. With everything that we need to do around here, we have to really start looking at, you know, the possibility. So, but, uh... Other than that, Mayor, uh, me and you had a discussion with Republic, and there are some containers outside. They're just demonstrations. We're just in the process right now. We're looking at maybe doing the, uh, containers, uh, for rubbish pickup. In other words, it'll... It's a 95-gallon container, rolls very easily, and then there'll be a 65-gallon recycled bin. They'll give them to the homeowner, and, uh, it'll make it a quicker process, uh, and neater, cleaner, uh, animal-proof, and, uh, high winds, we won't have rubbish blowing around like we had that... That one storm. So it's just a thought. Yeah, or cans or anything blowing... It's just a thought. We're in the... Just in the baby process right now. I know some people right away since they heard they had to wheel that thing up, they thought it was too heavy, but, uh, we don't think it will be.
A five-year-old child can wheel it.
Yeah, a five-year-old child can wheel it, so... Uh, but we're in the process, and if anybody wants to just take a look at them, they're... We're gonna leave them in the lottie. You can... On a roller around, go ahead, you know? But it's just a process, and we're looking into that, so...
Well, the good news is, our residents would be given, though.
Right. They'd be given to them.
Given, though.
Right.
So you'd never buy another garbage can.
It won't cost the city.
They don't cost us. They don't cost our residents. The residents' rates would remain pretty much the same.
Right.
So it's very, very interesting concept, and you are pursuing it just so that we make sure we got our eyes and processed.
And we will check... We're gonna check the other companies, but, uh, this is very, very, uh... Looks very promising.
You'll... You'll get two containers. One is for garbage, one's for recyclables.
Recyclables.
Recyclable stuff pick up every other week. It encourages recycling because, remember now how we carry out those bins and then stuff blows around, or you get... It's hard carrying that bin.
You won't have that anymore.
No more.
No.
It's...
It also helps us with our grant with, uh, reworks.
That's a big problem.
Yeah.
It'll help us with that. And, uh, that's my report, Mayor.
Uh, you know, Jim, I wanted to just thank you. You and I have had a conversation in the last couple of days about your plans on the North Bedford stormwater issues, and I haven't had a chance to go back to the people that are most interested in that, but that's already been sort of programmed, which we're gonna do, and I will be talking with them. I talked to them over the weekend, and, uh, you've also... And I've asked you to, just because there is a resident on Ledge Acres who's got some fairly major stormwater issues, and I've asked you to look at it, and if... I know you're gonna get back to me, so I appreciate that, and hopefully, we will get some of this resolved.
Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Commercial update, new construction. We have six under construction. Occupancies this year, we have 16 new businesses. Alterations, we have three. Residential update, we have, uh, new... 14 new home starts. There are 64 homes under construction, five additions, and 14 alterations. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Angela?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a reminder that the Recreation Center will be closed on Monday, the 26th, on observance of Memorial Day, so we wish everyone a nice, long, enjoyable weekend. We're supposed to have lots of sunshine, so hopefully, everyone can be outside and enjoy that. Um, our Spirit of Macedonia Community Festival is scheduled for June 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. That will take place in the parking lot, uh, at the Rec Center on East Aurora Road. Thursday hours, 6 to 10, we have a band from 7 to 10 on the main stage. Uh, Friday, 6 to 11, we have an Eagles tribute band from 7 to 10 on the main stage. Saturday, we have entertainment scheduled all day long. Uh, we have different activities and different performances, um, taking place on the stage, and we do have Cleveland's Breakfast Club playing that night, and we do have our fireworks display that night at 10 o'clock. Um, Sunday, we also have entertainment all day. Uh, we do have area mascots, uh, coming in, Disney princesses that kids can meet with. We have amusement rides, food concessions, um, food tents, all kinds of things going on over that four-day festival. So, um, it is free admittance, free parking, free entertainment. We do encourage people to come out. Um, if you want to bring lawn chairs and blankets for the fireworks show, or to enjoy the entertainment taking place on the stage, then we encourage you to do that as well. So we hope to see everybody participating and coming out and supporting this event, 'cause it should be a really nice time. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's a lot of work for you, and you're doing great. Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I should have legislation for those trucks that you approved for the purchase of this, uh, at the next council meeting. I'm trying to get some bids on different banks. We use... Normally, we're using First Merit or Dollar... Dollar Bank, and, uh, I wanna make sure that we shop the rates before we make a decision on that. Uh, the state auditor will be here next week to start off on Wednesday and, uh, begin that process for the 2012 budget, or 13 budget, their auditing. And, um, I wanna thank Joe Clark, our superintendent. He allowed us to do, uh, the flyers for the school, our annual fishing event, the second one on June 14th, Saturday, and, uh, we're expecting 90 to 100 kids there, and then we also were able to distribute the flyers out to the schools, and the grant money pays for all the printing of the flyers. Also, reimbursed the city for that. And again, they'll have a free, uh, fish and pole tackle box and lunch, and we'll have the fire explorers out and as many volunteers from the service and what other departments can come in. I didn't... I wasn't realizing that, uh, those are the actual same trashcans that we have in Canal Fulton, and we did a bid with Republic. They won the bid, and we had four other vendors that were part of the bid process, and we have those specs, and I'll, uh, share them with you. And our... Our bill was actually cut in half. They have a five-year contract with us, and at the time, it was about $77 a quarter, and we got it down to $38. But also, the... One of the huge benefits of having that sole provider do that service is that, um, it limits the truck traffic, 'cause we had five vendors on the streets all during, you know, multiple times and multiple days. So they pick up only on Wednesday, and, uh, they pick up pretty early, and one truck for recyclable, one truck for the rubbish, and it's unlimited also, and, uh, you know, you could even have your own second tote there, and, you know, they'll... They'll provide you the one, just like the blue one, that's for the regular trash, and then the green one's the commingled recyclables. And, uh, one of the things in our bid specs that we did is that we ensured that we had free service for all city buildings, and that's something that we could, you know, uh, look towards. So we were paying, on the average, about, uh, close to $500 a month for Republic, uh, before they got the bid, and so that's part of the bid process. We saved $6,000 on that. And then also, we have it on there where we were... We're getting so much a ton for the recyclables. It's weight on that truck, and we get a small check. I think it's about, um, $1,800, $2,000 a quarter. So, we're able to take that money, you know, $6,000, $8,000 a year, and use it for promotion for ourselves. We can spend it on anything we want, but we generally, uh, put it towards something, uh, you know, like the Canal Festival or whatever we have. So it's a good, um, you know, it's a good opportunity to, uh, to be able to get a... A look. You know, obviously, Republic's very competitive, but there's other players out there that would be more than happy to take over a... A bid process like that, because most of it's all automated now. You know, they wanna go to that machine dump and get it done, and those... Those, uh, containers... We're in the third year of our bid, and those containers have held up great, and the service is great for Republic, so that's a great opportunity that the city has when this, uh... I'm not sure when their contract ends, Jim.
Uh, November. That's why we started the process now.
Um, I talked to Nick Feeney about the recreational trails and, uh, Clean Ohio Program Grant that we did, and we got some correspondence from them, and when we submitted the grant back on the deadline of February, we didn't have an MPO, which is a, um, uh... The clearance for environmental. So at that time, we just... We went ahead and we just did a rough sketch with Nick's help, basically saying that it will be provided, and there's no environmental impact foreseeable at this point. And... And when I talked to the, uh, the grant manager down there, Mr. Hammond, he said that was fine, that if it got down to that further selection process, and they thought the grant was worthy, then they will send us a letter suggesting that we go ahead and include that. Well, we're at that stage. I'm gonna talk to him tomorrow. We did get the letter a few days ago, and it's requesting now the MPO clearance, and that is gonna be part of the grant application, but unfortunately, that's not free. We would have to contract out with, uh, GPD or someone else. I'm sure GPD would be more than happy to do it, but that would be part of our grant match. So basically, though, even though we have $30,000 set aside for our matching grant fund, I... I'd probably like to get a voice motion if everyone's on board, 'cause we're either gonna stall this out, or at least go through the MPO clearance and have GPD do it and... And, uh, get to the second stage of our grant, and that's for that $180,000 trail grant that we proposed to do in Longwood Park. So, if it's, uh... If council decides they wanna head and do that, you know, I'd like to get Nick on board, and, uh, I'll... I'll talk to, um, uh, Jawan's his name, Jawan Hammond, the grant manager, and see if we are his feeling of it. What's the long shot? Are we 100 to 1? Are we closer to that? Is it worth us pursuing at this point to spend, I don't know how much, $5,000 to $10,000? I don't know. It depends on how detailed their specs will be on that. So at least it's not been shot down. I'm, you know, hopeful for it, and then, again, a lot of that stuff is how much money they have and willing to give out, and if... Whether they like this site and what they think it, uh, fits into what they are trying to accomplish, so... That's about it. Uh, I'd like to make a comment. There has been a lot of controversy about our budget, and, um... And I appreciate... I had the opportunity to purview, um, Lauren Sangstock's, the past finance director's, uh, thing that he handed out to you a few weeks ago, and I've been in contact with him. And, um, one of the things, obviously, he was... He was here during a rough patch of the city where the finance went down to zero, and you had to, um, lay off people for the budget. And the big difference between when Lauren was here and when I was here is Lauren had literally no control of that. You had Greco go out, and you had Ben Venu go out, and the economy plummeted, and he didn't have time to react, as what we are having time to react now. And so, a large part of that was, you didn't have a... A carryover balance at the time built up to, so to speak, weather the storm before further funding would go. And in the past history that Joseph Feen provided for me, obviously, you guys know 'cause you were here, they lost on the first attempt to get, uh, property tax evaluation to increase the revenue. So at that point, though, at, uh, you know, the finance director and council at the time knew that they had to, you know, surgically remove some finances, some expenses, and they cut the budget. And in that year, for the workers' comp, I remember, we had... We had cut over $650,000 in salaries and wages, and most of that came from the brunt of the safety forces and a lot of internal, uh, employees. And for me, your council's job is to try to appease everyone and to try to get things done, and for me, though, I'm also trying to look at the whole as a city, and I don't wanna see us going into a slide of a... Budget disaster. And without any further money, we're $700,000 in a hole right now this year, and even though we have the... And even though we have the, the 3.2 carryover, at the end of '14, if everything works out with these forecasts from Rita, we're going to go down to that $2.5 million carryover, which sounds like a lot of money, but 2.5, then the following year, without spending any additional capital again, we're going to be in a hole for $1 million, because we have other obligations, including the obligation we're going to make for the Street Department's new 2 Kenworth trucks. So we're going to pay that debt, we're going to have some other roadway projects that we're already starting on the 271 ramp, and then we already have union negotiations, wages, and that, that, that we can't stop. So those things are already in play, and so even the best-case scenario, we're going to create, you know, with the small growth of income tax, revenue, you know, a 2% forecast, even though we're going to lose 1.3 million for Rita's projection, we're going to be in a hole another million dollars. So that 2.5 that I'm hoping to get back to at the end of this year is going to shrink to 1.5. And then you can then get into one, to 2015 with a 1.5 carryover, and then slide again another million. And I'll guarantee you, at the end of 2016, with a pretty conservative estimate, we're going to have less than $500,000. Again, $500,000 carryover in the general fund, mitigating any, and that's not even saying that there's any healthcare adjustments that can go along the way, because we could have been faced this year by us leaving BORMA, our healthcare provider, for our last four years, we could have been faced with an additional $250,000 bill. We were extremely lucky on the timing, and we're extremely lucky that Summit County picked us up for, for us to be part of their organization. So there's a lot of unknown variables that I look at, that I don't know, maybe I'm failing to present to some of the people on council, that I'm trying to look at the big picture. I don't want to be in this position to lay off anyone. I don't think that our current employment, in my opinion, is, is, because we just now ramped up from the last three years to where, where the police chief's happy with his number of employees. And I know Mr. Diglatano has always been saying, and as well as Jim Crevar, that he's down four to five people than from what he has. So we're not excessive at all, in any means, I feel, in any department. In fact, my own department, which I'm not going to cry about, is, again, less than what was when Lauren had a deputy, and et cetera, et cetera. But the point is, I think we're leaned, and we're pretty good, but we don't have enough money to do these streets. We don't have enough money. When, and one of the things I think that when you come out of it, that Mr. Lauren Sensok pointed out, is we've got $60 million in infrastructure of roadways and, and wastewater or stormwater facilities, and they're aging, and, and, and we're faced with the same problems in all cities. And, but, we don't have that money to set aside. We've got a roof that we're going to need to fix. So it's, it's commonly, you know, like your own household, so we, we either have to increase that revenue, or we got to decrease expenses. And we've already decreased expenses now to the point where we just need to hold on to the, to what we have, or else we're going to be down to, you know, fiscal emergency, and the state will take it over and dictate how you're going to spend their money, just like they're doing Maslin. I don't want to be in this chair, and I don't want to be the person that said, "You guys screwed up," you know, "not under my watch." You guys have the power to do whatever you want, I can only advise, and that's why, when we fix one or two streets at the tune of $200,000 or $300,000, we can have another allotment come in here tomorrow and complain just as much, and it would be just as justified to say, "I want my streets fixed next." And we just don't have the revenue to do it. Well, there's one. Thank you.
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Council for the appointment of three new part-time firefighters. They are desperately needed. We have three more in the pipes. The Affordable Healthcare Act has affected our department immensely with the number of hours they can work. Plus, we have good employees that work here part-time, and they're taking employment in other cities. They stay here, but their availability of work goes down, so hence, we need more part-time firefighters. So thank you for that. Also, Chief Black apologizes for not being here tonight, but he is currently on his way to Colorado, where he's going to spend his Memorial Day with his son, who's based at Fort Carson in the US Army, and going to have a, some bonding. And with that, I would like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day, safe Memorial Day, and remember the veterans and why we were able to have that day. Thank you.
All right. Another Brian.
I just want to thank Council and the Mayor again for giving us our dispatcher greatly needed. It'll go a long way to getting calls out quicker, and just happy Memorial Day to everybody.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief report. Engineering has been working on EPA Phase II stormwater annual inspection and maintenance programs with the Building Department. We'll be rolling that out in the next month or two. We've also been assisting service and building in a couple of miscellaneous drainage complaints. That's about all I have to report on. I just want to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day.
Thank you, Nick.
Nick, could I ask you a question? Have we gotten a firm answer on when they're starting with 271?
No, but we do have two meetings coming up in the next two weeks with ODOT and the Mayor's Office. We've got a Route 82 meeting coming up, after upon which we'll be able to report back on, on project updates and costs for right-of-way acquisition. 271, we have a meeting in the first week of June. After that meeting, I'll have more detailed information for you. I know the project was sold, but I don't have detailed information on what that.
And when are the meetings now in Surrey?
We have a meeting coming up before the end of this week for 82, and we have a meeting next week for the 271 project.
And when are, when are we going to know about the right-of-way acquisition clause?
After that meeting.
After those meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Joe?
There are just fond memories and gratitude to all of our veterans of our own families and of all others' families for generations past, and those who are still with us. Thanks to everyone, and have a nice weekend.
Okay. All right, is there any unfinished business or new business?
I have one quick question on new business. I know we're going to be coming around at the end of June, so another end of the quarter. Scott, if you do not take healthcare, my understanding is, you get reimbursement, or I hate to say it, it's reward for not taking healthcare, totally against us, but I know it's part of the plan. If you are a single, designated as single, not family, is there a difference in price or benefit?
I don't believe so. I think it's, in that ordinance, it said $1,800 a year, if you forgave it.
I thought you get paid, why, why would you pay someone who's single the same amount of money as a family? Can you double-check that? Because I don't want the wrong dollar amount on my check. Actually, I don't want the check, but if, I don't believe, I thought the legislation was passed that a single gets X, and a family gets more.
I'll check that.
It's logic.
It's logic, but I'll check that.
Thank you. If you could check and let me know.
Sure.
Or do you want me to check with Betsy?
No, I'll check for you.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say one other issue here, and I want to also say thank you to the veterans. My husband, my late husband was one, and I worked for Department of Defense for many, many years, and I really understand what happens to people when they serve. Some of it very good, and some of it not so good. I do have one thing that I want to put on the record, and that is that one of our local areas that's potentially going to be sold to a developer, Osborne Development, or actually Macedonia, Beps and Macedonia LLC, there has been a, a communication from the person who owns the majority of stock in the current gas station over there in the corner of 82 and 8, and he has communicated that he has not authorized the issuing of building permits for this property. There's been a lot of exchanges back and forth on this. I do have a copy of the building permits, and there is no indication that anyone from the, the people, the existing ownership group have signed off. So I would like to have a definitive answer on what happens if this particular deal that was, that's in progress but not completed, is, what if it's aborted, and what if it's completed but at a later time? We do have building permits for demolishment, all other things, as you know. So I do think the, the person who is the owner, the majority owner of the stock at this point does deserve an answer, and I think we need a formal answer.
I've given formal answer. You were copied on it. Cannot be any more formal than an opinion from the Law Department based upon evidence from the Building Department. A corporation does not speak through its individual shareholders. A corporation is a person, it's an entity. The shareholders are the voting members of it. If they want to fight with each other about who controls and who makes applications, that's between them. It is not something the city should be involved in. Otherwise, anyone who came in from a corporate entity asking for a permit to do anything, we would have to do a title search, we would have to do a records check, we'd have to do an investigation of that entity, and cost the taxpayers thousands of dollars to do that. We've never done that, doesn't make any sense to do that. So the person that you're talking about was cited for some problems that were in violation of the code. The same people who applied for the permit or authorized the application for the permit were the ones who showed up at mayor's court. They're the same ones who registered for a point-of-sale agreement, they're the same inspection, rather, and they're the same ones listed on the plat, which is our bible that we go by for ownership of property. So that's as formal as it's going to get.
Okay, I just want to make a couple of comments here.
I don't think we should debate this.
Well, I don't think you should be cutting me off either.
Motion to adjourn is always in order.
So let me finish what I'm saying, and here is, I don't think that I need another comment either. I would want to finish what I'm saying.
Excuse me. I didn't see you get anointed here. This is a potential for litigation if we discuss this out on the floor about personnel, or lit, potential litigation if we're talking about who owns what. That is, you know, the lawyers could get together and discuss it. That was recommended by our Law Department, back to that person's lawyer. I think we need to be extremely careful, and I understand the person wants an answer. They received an answer. If they're not appreciative of that answer, that is not our role. That's why we have a Law Department. I'm not a lawyer, you're not a lawyer. I think we need to let the people who understand the laws of this state and our community to work together. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for coming.